This meeting of the Nottingham Board of Selectmen for Monday, August 12th, 2019, to order. And if you can all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item we have is a manifest.
I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable manifest of August 12th and payroll manifest of August 13, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Enamis? En?
Yeah, I don't have a pen.
There you go.
Oh, yeah. I feel like I've forgotten how to do cursive.
Mine, mine looks like a doctor's signature, like you can't make it out.
Aw, thank you so much.
All right. Next item, minutes. Last time we had a chance to look at the minutes from the 29th, but we decided to wait until John and Donna were here so they could get their feedback.
For the 15th, you mean?
Um, I'm sorry. I'm, yes.
Yeah.
Do we have minutes for the last one?
We have minutes for the 29th, I believe.
Yeah. I, I think I had replied on the 15th and given my feedback on that.
You made some, okay.
I, I don't recall if I had any, but I'm pretty sure I replied and said, I, I think the only thing was that it's listed to be as absent and I was there. I think that was the only feedback.
Yes, yeah, that was one of the things that we brought up.
That was the only thing I had.
Okay. All right. So do you comfortable voting on it tonight? Because Tyler didn't have any, any other changes when we discussed it last week.
Yeah.
So that'd be the 15th, correct? Okay. All right, then I will take a motion on the minutes for the 15th as amended.
I like the motion to accept the minutes as amended for the 15th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Enamis? Yeah, I don't have any minutes for the 29th in here.
Um, there was one thing, 29th was the last meeting, right?
Yeah.
There was one thing when I was looking today at the minutes versus the draft policy for tax deeding.
Yeah.
There was, and I'm trying to look for it here, I can't find it right here, but the policy, I think, said we have something about three years where the minute said something about two years. I'm just trying to find that. It's like the time the board has to act or something.
I think it was, that was actually debated at the meeting, three years.
Well, there's a discrepancy between the minutes and the policy, so I just, I think...
The, they might actually both be correct depending on how you say it.
Okay.
But it's, it's at least two years from the leaning, and the leaning is one year after the tax bill, so I don't know whether I'm looking for the language.
Yeah, I'm trying to see where it was. I mean, i- i- if it's a distinction of wording, then I think that they should be corrected so that somebody who looks at both doesn't wonder why.
It's the two years.
It's the two years.
In the minutes, it says the RSA states that after three years of non-payment, the town can put a lien on a property. That leaves from the minutes.
It's, yeah, so the, the, I don't know what was said, but what was, what the law says is it's leaned after a year and af- and two years after that, it goes to deeding. So, um, the better way to say it is, in the minutes, is after three years of non-payment, the town can deed the property, not put a lien on the property. That's the, much more accurate.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. So that would be the correction to the minutes?
If that's...
Yeah, for that language.
Yep.
I think it should. I mean, I just, I think, I don't think that there should be a discrepancy between the two.
Fifty and 51.
Yeah.
I just, well, I have a, I have a version of it here, I, I can change this one since it's, yeah.
Just looking for where it is in the policy.
Well, in section two, it says the, uh, NMSA 80 colon 38 requires tax collector to execute a deed for any property two years after a lien is placed on the property.
That was it. That's, that's it. And I, and I understand the, that they're both correct, but I just think they need to be reconciled.
Yeah. So the lien is placed after the first year.
Correct.
And then two years later, it's, okay. Yeah, that, that, that seems to reflect the disparity. Yeah, yeah, I had the minutes in, oh, I do not have it. Okay, all right, so we got the minutes this morning. Yeah, I haven't had a chance to review them yet, so. And they are too tiny on my screen here to read. Are we okay with putting this off till, till next meeting that we have a chance to review it? All right, so we will defer that until... What day is that? Next meeting.
Next meeting is the 26th.
Okay, okay. All right. Oops, don't want to put that by the mic. All right. All right, next item on the agenda, action items from last meeting. I don't believe we had any.
Uh, just the draft policy, which shows up later in your agenda, I believe.
Okay. All right. Reports from assigned boards and committees.
Nothing on budget, they're meeting the first week of September.
Okay. Planning?
Nothing on planning.
Nothing yet, okay. They haven't met since last time?
No, I was at the last, yeah, that last meeting.
Oh, good.
And I, if Tyler would have been the one at, if there was a meeting from now to then.
Oh, okay, okay. Budget, planning, CIP.
Where Chris has distributed the sheets to all of the department heads, I'm trying to help him get the information we need from the school, and the request has been backed by early September, right, for everybody to distribute, to submit their sheets.
What else we got? I gotta have a, have a card with all these on it.
Marston.
Marston, yeah.
So, still, moving forward, the break, the start date of around the 19th. I honestly haven't connected with Matt yet on a groundbreaking, or ceremonial groundbreaking, but I will do that this week. Fundraising is on track. Joe Porter has put together some recommendations for how we might solicit sponsorships as a committee we haven't had a chance to review and move that forward yet, but what she has done is great work. And then I'll let Chris talk to what's going on in terms of an archaeological dig out there right now.
That's a, uh...
That's a big word.
It's a big word, yeah, it's not that dramatic.
It's not that dramatic, right.
Uh, so, in applying for a couple of state grants, one for one of the trails and another one that's much bigger for what would essentially be Phase Two of the project, chasing after those state and federal dollars comes with a whole bunch of requirements around, well, wildlife, historical resources, all, you know, you can imagine anytime you get state and federal money involved. We have navigated the wildlife portions and the, uh, what's the other one? The wetlands were good.
Yep.
Um, we've had to get a, what's called Phase One A archaeological survey. The area is considered potentially sensitive for, um, archaeological reasons and pre-contact Native American potential, just because of where, where it is along the river. So we hired a, a firm to come out and do that initial survey. They're gonna come back to us with a, there's nothing to look for here, or we need to do more looking on X, Y, and Z. The first round of stuff happened last week. That was essentially walk in the property, digging some soil pits, looking at the historical record that we do have, so, um, that is all racing along to try and stay in front of the bulldozers.
Yep.
And I expect we'll have some more on that in the next 24, 48 hours, so. No, I haven't found anything of significance. It was a, you know, it was a farm for a very long time, so.
Yeah.
It's, it's pretty well disturbed, but there may be something of interest there, so we'll, we'll know more shortly.
Interestingly, if they did find something, it, it could be an opportunity for us to include a different type of educational experience, you know, so it, it doesn't necessarily mean that it would be a showstopper or anything like that. It could actually be another opportunity for us, which potentially could open us up to additional funding and grants.
Yes.
So there's, there's a couple of ways to look at it, but we'll see what the results come back is.
Was there an actual date for the, uh, birthday?
Uh, I think they're starting on the 19th, I think I said.
You were talking about a ceremony.
We haven't picked that yet. No, we haven't picked that yet. You'll be one of the first to know, Steve.
I want to get a picture.
I know.
With you with a shovel.
And a hard hat.
So, yeah, if we do that, it'll be presumably in the morning or something?
Yeah, we'll just have to, we'll have to figure it out with everybody's schedule.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Do we have to bring our own shovel?
The ceremonial stuff does not have to align at all with the reality.
Exactly, 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 exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I can bring my own shovel. Okay.
But do you have a hard hat?
I do.
All right.
Yes, I do. In fact, I was wearing it most of today. All right, any other boards and committees? 300th? That's not an official, huh?
Zoning.
Zoning? We don't have a presence on zoning. Is that it? Okay. All right, Town Administrator Report.
Uh, all right, we still have evidence of bacteria at the beach, so camp is not using the beach, at least today and tomorrow. Uh, beach is still, it's open, swim at your own risk, but we're, we're not going in. Looks like cyanobacteria, so, um, in the interest of caution, we're gonna keep the kids out of the water, at least until that changes.
Why, why has there been a change in the state doing the testing?
Well, they don't want, they don't have the money, you know? They, they hit their priority spots and, uh...
Were they doing it for like all towns like this in the past, or?
No, no, it was a, it was a, I don't know how they came to the list that they had, but they, they had to, I, I assume, I assume it was money.
Okay.
They had to prioritize their list, and our test results had been uneventful, so.
Okay.
But as, I think I said last time, we're still, we're still doing the testing.
Right.
We're just doing the legwork, and we'll have to pay a few bucks for it.
Okay, so we were lucky they were just doing it for us all along?
Uh, yeah, I guess so, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I think, I think Courtney had scheduled four different tests for the season, um, and that seemed like a, a good, you know, effort on our part to keep, just to keep an eye on it, where it's just not worth doing very frequently for the cost, so.
Okay.
We may, we may look back at the summer and say, we need more data, or then we're just kind of making it up as we go along at this point, but, um, I'm sure people are swimming all over the lake and...
Well, it does get isolated.
Right, it, it travels a little bit, and it, it finds its way into the coves, I think, and...
It's usually the state park, the beach area, that's the problem.
Yeah. And we haven't been watching that closely, what's going on, I mean, we, we get notice when they close the beach, but we don't watch it that closely.
Yeah.
The clean out of the back building went really well last week. We had a crew from the county jail come out and fill four roll-off dumpsters. Uh, I don't have the weights yet, but it'll be staggering when it comes through. I think the prize goes to Courtney, who in the wreck pile out back found a can of cherries from 1982.
Oh, my God.
The oldest piece of paper I found was late eighties, so, uh, just to put things to scale.
And to put them on display as maybe...
No, no, we meant it, we meant it go away. That's, that's done. Uh, we still have, we, uh, we still have stuff back there. Almost all of it is of some use to us. The big, the bulk of it is election materials. Uh, we have our emergency management cots and blankets and stuff back there, some police barricades and things. And we have, I think, now two closets full of paper that we're required to keep, that we just don't have room for in the building, in the conditioned space of the building. We're, we're pretty much required to keep everything from any time the town has ever been involved in a lawsuit, whether we're gonna lay hands on it again or not. The law says you have to keep it forever, so, um, until we get into a, you know, a document scanning program of some sort to make all this stuff go away, we're, we're gonna have to just sit on that stuff.
Yep.
It's okay, we're, it's not in the way. And lastly, uh, I just wanted to give this to you for a little nighttime reading. We are evaluating, um, accounting software. Our, our current system gives us fits all over the place. We came into this year saying, uh, we were gonna, um, get a payroll service. We do our payroll in-house with, uh, you've, you've seen that, how that process goes, um, you know, handwritten timesheets, and, uh, got partway into that and said, well, let's look at the whole system. So I give you this just to show you the framework of the kinds of things we're considering as we evaluate these. This is not a full and complete chart yet, but, um, uh, two things. If there are, on the left-hand side are the kinds of things that we're evaluating, uh, on both sides of the sheet of paper. If, two things for you, if there's anything else you would be interested in, I don't know if any of you have been through a accounting software transition in your real life, it's, it's not something you just jump into willy-nilly, so, uh, if there's anything else you, when it comes time to make a decision, if there's other things you want to know about, um, it would be helpful to know that. And secondly, if anybody wants to get down in the weeds with us and, you know, talk through these evaluations or look at the software, if you want to get that involved, I welcome any outside eyes. What we're, uh, we're juggling, um, cost is gonna be a big one, we have some money in the budget, we haven't paid for our, um, our existing service for most of next year yet, so we have some money to work with if we do make a change. So we're, we're looking at that and the capabilities of the various options. Who else is using them? You know, what kind of feedback we're getting on that. Our, our current system, we, we pretty much have one user that knows how to use it, which is not a position I want to be in.
Right.
And, uh, I think it's DOS-based, essentially. There.
Talk about archaeological bits.
Yeah, it's, um, it's really, really clumsy, uh, and just to sit and watch, uh, if you just stand over Betsy's shoulder and watch her operate the thing, you can tell that it's, it's just not, it's not efficient. It's, it's really unpleasant to, to watch. You really can't use a mouse, really. You have to use the tab key for most everything, so, uh, it's time, uh, but we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, go through this process. We've, we've had presentations from three or four different vendors, actually had, you know, live demos and things, gone through a bunch of that stuff, um, but, uh, I hope to come back with some kind of recommendation before too long. So I just give you that now to, as a teaser. I think the leading contender at this point is the system that the SAU just moved to, uh, but we have a couple more that we want to really drill down on, so, um, as you can imagine, there may be some benefits to that. Those are the kinds of things that we're also incorporating in this.
And they did the same type of thorough evaluation?
I don't, we, I don't think many of the people that, they, they've had turnover there, and I don't think many of them...
Are still here.
Are still, I do, I could be mistaken there, but, um, we have talked with them, Betsy's talked with them, and, um, uh, I think, uh, the, the budget committee watched that transition as the reports changed, I think is one thing. We need to get off of the, I don't know if you're aware of this, but our, our entire budget process is pretty much our accounting software spitting stuff out into Excel, and we do our work in Excel, and, uh, and then go back into the accounting software once it's all done. And, you know, that, that used to involve three different people, and it was what we had to do to, to survive. We may still have an Excel component, but we really need a system that can go back and forth very easily to do that with. We, I think we'll probably get to the point, if we go more cloud-based, to where you could actually, we, we, one of, another thing we're evaluating, I'm not promising this, but we may get to a system where you could just log in and look at invoices. So as you look at a manifest, if you have questions right now, you're pretty much just calling Betsy and I and saying, what's this? Ideally, we get to a point where we just scan an invoice and it's there forever, and if you want to go poke around and see what we're doing in real time, you can just look at it, it's all public information, so. That's, that's the Holy Grail.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We may get there, we may not, but that's another...
Yep.
Kind of user, um, and get something that I can get in there and do a lot of that stuff too, because I'm reliant on our bookkeeper to do just about everything.
Right.
Uh, our department heads are. That would all happen at the same time. We do something, most of these systems have a, um, a time-tracking payroll system incorporated in them, so what we're doing now is, you know, manually adding up the hours on a timesheet and typing that into one system and, you know, to get to payroll and you can, a modern payroll system, you, you know, employees can look at their stuff right online and...
So how would their time, would they enter their time, or?
Yeah, they, we'd have a, an online time clock, essentially. You, when you, our hourly employees, when they get to work, they just log in and say, I'm here. And it would, you know, that would always be there for them to see and for us to see, and...
Yeah, yeah.
We'd keep track of their vacation time, and all that other stuff would all be, and that's all done manually right there.
Yeah, that's cool.
And employees, they have a little bit of that information on their pay stubs, they can, they can see some of that as the, as time goes by, but the modern systems, you can see, everything's right there for everybody to access, and, so, uh, that's another Holy Grail thing, but, um, anyway, if you want to get more into that, I welcome any other input. That's a big change. And that is all I have.
Hey, guys, I, I apologize to do this, but I was just looking through the minutes from the 29th again, 'cause I have them up in front of me, and, under BOs reports from assigned boards and committees, line 16, it says Marston Property, and then it said, Mr. Stern-Dale said fundraising committee met last week. The outdoor concerts are being well-attended, Mr. Soref said. A mug will be for sale at the Pancake Breakfast on August 11th to support the 300th elevation. Three hundred hats are on sale in the town office as well. There's two different things being confused there, because the concerts and the mugs and the Pancake Breakfast aren't for the Marston Property. So, there's...
Oh, it needs a header for 300.
It needs, it needs a different header for 300.
Call it out separately.
Okay.
Yeah. Do you understand, Lorraine? Yeah, okay. I just don't want people to be confused about the efforts, what they're... What's that?
Let me get right on that. I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, right there, there. All set. All set, Dr.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Oh, it's okay. Better to do it now while it's fresh, fresh on your mind. Okay. Any questions for Chris on the accounting software or anything else? No?
Sounds good. It sounds like it's something that's most, much needed.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just the money, that's gonna be the hard part.
Moving into the current century does cost money.
Yes, it does. All right, moving on, general business, Ledge Farm Road Project and road closure.
Okay, we have posted the bid, we talked two weeks ago, we talked about, this is the project, we said we ought to bid with what we had drawn, right, that's where, that was where we left off. We've done that, um, and we also, uh, started to talk about the possibility of closing the road during the day to speed up the project and save money on traffic control in the project. We are meeting with potential bidders this week, and I'd like to give them some guidance on that. If you want to go down that road, so to speak, um, of offering road closure, uh, we should tell them that now so that we can incorporate that into their bid.
them that now so that we can incorporate that into their bids. The engineer's estimate was, I think, 25 grand on flagging. It's about, with two flaggers, costs you about 70 bucks an hour, times eight hours a day, times a six or eight-week project, it's a, it's a big enough number that it's worth talking about. It's not required, we can have a one-lane road during construction, we can say that's the parameters, and, you know, contractors work around that. We don't know how much it would shrink the project, we have a guess at how much it would save in dollars, we don't know how much it would save in time, but we can, we can, if you wish, say to bidders, you can close during these hours during the day for this many weeks, and they can work within that and plan their work accordingly. If you do go down that road, we'd require, you know, signage and, you know, in advance of that day, you know, a couple of weeks ahead of time, this road will be closed in these hours on these days. We'd, of course, blast it wherever we can and get the word out. Definitely be an inconvenience for some people, it would affect pretty much the entire stretch of Ledge Farm Road from Rocky Hill to Poor Farm Road, that's where all the work is gonna be contained. So the folks that live on Rocky Hill could still get out, folks on Poor Farm and Francesca and all that can still get to Epping. It's everybody going from this side of town toward Epping and vice versa that would be most impacted. Ideally, from a contractor point of view, you want as long a chunk of the day as you can get, you know, there's a, if you only do it for a few hours in the middle of the day, you don't really get that much work done, it doesn't really help you, and you probably still need traffic control on either end, probably for a minimum number of hours. So you wanna hire a flagger, you gotta pay him a minimum of two or four hours anyway, so. From a construction point of view, as long a chunk of the day as you, as you can afford. We, it's not something we've done before on a busy road, you know, this is a 300 or 400-car-a-day stretch of road, I believe, and we just so happened to have some traffic counts from two years ago by time of day, so I threw those at you to show you what the typical flow is. And I think that's all the information I can give you.
Even if they close the road, I mean, they're still gonna let local residents-
Yeah, somebody that lives in that, there's two driveways in that stretch with three or four homes, I think they're gonna need to be able to get in and out, the contractor's gonna have to figure that out. One thing I should mention, the school buses don't use that stretch of the road, so-
So that's not a worry.
I talked to the superintendent of the bus company, that's not a factor.
Awesome.
They don't have to change their routes.
Oh, okay.
They go to Rocky Hill from one side and they, you know, they, they don't come that further, far down on Ledge Farm, so-
That makes a difference.
There's no, no school bus impact. Now, parents driving their kids to school, you know, we have a lot of those in town, there's probably gonna be some impact to them.
But advance notice is gonna help with that, 'cause then they can plan ahead for, you know, these days, they're gonna leave early and go this way instead of that way.
So what's the, what's the ideal schedule that the construction company would want, like seven to four, or?
I think, well, looking at the, the traffic flows that we have, I think that seven to eight hours is pretty important to-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
-the commuting world, so I think if we offered an eight to four window, I don't know, why does the four o'clock drop off of, yeah, so things pick up again in that four to five window?
Yeah.
An eight-hour stretch, that's a legitimate chunk of work time and, at the right time of day.
So if we did it for that, how long would, like, how many days would the project take?
We don't know that, what we buy in terms of time. So what, all we can do is offer an amount of time with that road closure as part of the bid process. We could come back and negotiate that with the, once we have a low bidder or a couple of low bidders, we could refine it a little bit if they came back and said, you know, we really need seven weeks of this, or what-
Well, that's what, that's kinda what I was trying to get at, is if we're saying, okay, we're gonna close the road for eight hours a day, are we saying we're closing it for eight hours a day for three weeks, eight weeks? How many above that?
I'd say to make it worthwhile, it's gotta be at least five or six weeks to have an impact. There still may need to be some traffic control on the other end, so some of the savings goes away. So I really need to just know, I need to see if you have any willingness at all to talk with them about that, and if so, what that framework is, and we can come back and nail it down. But if you're comfortable with, say, six weeks of eight to four, or eight weeks of eight to four, we can tell the bidders that and then tweak around the, around the edges of that before we sign the contract. If you're not comfortable with it at all, it's fine, we'll work around it.
This is with the understanding that it's, the road is closed during the eight-four.
Closed to all traffic both ways, yep.
I get, I guess I don't understand, like, if we said you can have every day from eight to four, they can't come back to us and say, okay, we think we can complete the project in X weeks based on that?
Oh, they will.
Okay.
Yes, we just, we don't know what that trade off is.
We don't know what it is, okay, okay.
Until we get the bid.
Right.
Okay.
So you wanna offer them the opportunity to factor that in so that we know?
Yes.
Okay. But, I mean, it still comes down to, the longer we give them during the day, the faster the project's gonna be complete.
Yes, the more days and the longer, the longer the day and the more days, they're probably both equally important, the faster the job can-
So when's the projected start date?
Uh-
Estimate.
It's September.
All right, so we're going six, eight weeks or so, we gotta keep in mind daylight savings and all that.
Yeah, the tail end of it's gonna be dark.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think, given them that, that much during the day, hopefully we'll speed up the project enough so we can avoid some of the, you know, lack of daylight.
I mean, I'm thinking, give them more time so that they get it done faster.
Yeah.
That's, that's less of a pain than-
I mean, it'd be an inconvenience for some of the residents and all that stuff, but I think in the long run, it'll be beneficial cost-wise and time-wise.
And time-wise.
Close the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
And then just-
Max eight weeks, eight to four.
I don't, I just, like, I don't know how we put that max on it, if we, I don't, I don't understand.
We, we tell them, bid it based on this, and they, and they'll say, okay, I know I've got eight weeks of daytime closure for eight hours a day, they'll, they'll lay out their work plan, and they'll come back and they'll tell us, okay, I can do the whole thing for this much in this many weeks. So-
We may be pleasantly surprised, and they say, no, we can do it in five or six weeks, we don't know.
We don't know.
So if, if we're saying you only have eight weeks and it really is gonna take 10 weeks, does that mean they're gonna put more resources on it so it's done in that eight weeks?
It's probably more efficient for them to do that. It may not work out that way, and they may have to do partial road closures, like one-lane traffic. When I say partial, I mean, you can still get through. You know, at the beginning, it may not make sense to close the road completely, they don't wanna use the time there, and they may not need it at the end for finish work.
But, but why would we wanna, if we do it partial, if we do like one lane, and then we have to have flaggers?
We're giving back some of that-
We're giving back some of the money, so what's, what's the point?
Uh, well, we just, we don't know, we don't know how much they really need of that time, so this is-
Why don't we just leave the timeline open, see what they come back with? Give the timeline as eight to four, but the time, like, six, eight, 10 weeks, whatever the case may be, see what they come back with.
Because then it gets harder to do apples-to-apples comparisons on bids. So if we say, you have a max road closure window of X, they'll all bid it around the-
We're talking 2,000 feet of road. You know, it's tricky where it is, but it's not like it's, this is a 10-mile stretch that they're rebuilding.
Yeah, but there's a lot of ledge in there, reconfiguring that.
Oh, I understand, but I'm just-
But, okay, so you'll, you'll come back, you'll have apples-to-apples comparison, and then say, we can pick one or two and say, okay, what if we gave you this much time?
Yeah, we can, we can do that late in the process and say, we just need to, we need to have an apples-to-apples exercise-
Okay.
-based on some framework, and if we, we give them a window and say, bid it based on this, we can tweak the beginning and ending-
Okay.
-and when we get down to the last one or two contractors, we can learn, what do you really buy with an extra week, or what do you-
Okay, fine, okay.
So we'll just say our initial guideline-
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense, no?
So our initial guidelines would be eight to four, subject to adjustment-
Yeah.
-based on need.
Yeah, and you, and there's, at the end of that contracting process, you're, whoever is selected, you're, you're gonna go through little things like that around the contract and the bid and say, all right, if we tweak this part, what do we, you know, the little value engineering that goes on late in the game. Once you've got your low bidder, you work around the edges with little things like that.
Fine, okay.
But you wanna put as much of it in the framework as you can, so you get a clear apples-to-apples fair bid process.
So what are we say, what are we saying, eight to four for eight weeks, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just as a baseline.
Yep, yep.
All right, good, that's, that's enough to keep us moving.
It's gonna, it's gonna be an inconvenience no matter way, but I'm, I'm with you, it's like, let's get it done.
Get it done, yeah.
Yeah, once the inconvenience starts, then, you know-
Yeah, exactly.
And they're, obviously, within that timeframe, there will be days where the road doesn't close 'cause they don't need to, but we're not gonna try and communicate that on a day-to-day basis, it's just a language.
So the signage that will have to be put up, is that included in the contract, or is that okay?
Yeah, that'll all be on them.
And I assume they'll probably put it on both ends of the road, the Epping side and-
Yeah, I'd envision the changeable letter sign, you know, the-
The reader board, yeah.
Reader board, yeah, 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 that's what, that's the standard.
Yeah, okay.
Cool.
Okay, yeah, wrong minute.
Okay, thank you.
Where, from where to where would be the roads closed?
From Rocky Hill Road to Poor Farm Road.
This is on Ledge Farm Road?
Yes. Ledge Farm would be closed, the other two would not.
I think your Poor Farm Road is the other side of the road, so I'm confused, up by Francesca.
Poor Farm connects to Francesca. It connects Ledge Farm and Francesca.
Gotta go take a drive out there, Steve.
I did, you get rough.
All right, next item, tax deed policy. All right, so last time we talked about this, our goal was to try to get something on paper that was reflective of the process, you know, as, as we currently follow it, you know, recognizing that some residents may be in temporary circumstances beyond their control, and not, not constructing a hard and fast algorithm that would automatically kick people out of their homes, that's what we wanted to avoid. So Chris has come up with some language to encapsulate that, and with that, I'll open that for discussion.
We're not looking to finalize it tonight, we're just discussing it, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I didn't have any comments on it, I mean-
Nothing, no?
I think it's worded in the way that we want it to be, 'cause it gives the board still some flexibility, which is what I think is important.
Yeah, and that's basically what we've been doing.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Evaluating each circumstance on its merits.
Yeah, I mean, I think the lead into the A, B, C, D, E, F, I think the fact that the statement says, the board will consider the following factors among others, if considering a deed waiver is, is important.
Yeah, 'cause there are, you know, pros and cons to taking a property.
Well, we don't really wanna put anybody out of their house.
Exactly.
At least we have something out, well, if we approve this, you know, at least we have something now in writing for somebody to, at least give them an idea of what the process is.
Yeah. It basically documents what we've been doing, so I don't have any problems with it.
I don't either.
You comfortable with those in 3B, those numbers there? That was really me, just, I didn't even look at what's against reality to come up with those, I can give you that before we finalize it, but-
Yeah.
How many does that really impact? I don't know that, I'm ready to get it for you.
Yeah, that's probably a good thing, I mean, I just, I didn't focus on that number too much, just because of the totality of it, you know?
Yeah, and we left the last meeting saying you wanted something, and I, this is, I think this is the hardest part, isn't it, when you, when you put it in there like that, you know, you've talked through the pluses and minuses of that.
Yeah, and I think the idea behind that, and anybody, correct me if I'm wrong, was to define a threshold where we say, yeah, this one is beyond the line, we need to take serious consideration.
Yeah, it's, it's not a black-and-white threshold, it's a threshold in the overall consideration, so it's really not a threshold.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
It's not a trigger, it's just a-
Correct.
-an escalation point, maybe?
Yeah, or a, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm picking the right word for it, but, but yeah. All right. Well, let's take some time until next meeting and read this over, I want Tyler to weigh in on this, too, and then, Chris, you get us those reality-based numbers, and then if all goes well, we should be able to put this to rest next meeting, I think. Sound good?
You won't be here next meeting, right?
No, but I can certainly get you that.
I think we'll need your kind of explanation behind those numbers, though.
All right, any other questions for Chris on that?
No.
Nope.
The revenue made public, that list?
What list?
All, all policies are public, yeah.
All right, before you, sorry, I have one signature item, a couple meetings, few meetings back, you approved the unmerger, or restoration of merged lots, and I just, we need you to sign something to file with the registry.
Okay.
I think you might have missed that meeting, I think that's what that may say there, but-
Oh, you guys approved that?
Yeah, you, you voted on it, but we just didn't have you sign it at the time, that's what that is. And you were gonna do a brief, non-public under A.
Yep.
Unless you have, you have other stuff?
No, just, one thing I just kinda wanted to comment on, we kind of agreed that we were gonna use the agenda to publish the items for the next meetings to come, and there hasn't been anything here. So I think if we're gonna use this as a tool, we should try to-
Fill it in.
Fill it in. Otherwise, we just have it blank, 'cause we should by now at least have an idea of what we're doing at the next meeting.
That comes from the same, that comes from the spreadsheet of what we used to-
I know, but this is public, our spreadsheet's not.
Right, but there's, there is genuinely nothing on this, you know, we haven't put anything in there, we, doesn't mean we can't fill it with something, but that's where that's, it's automatically fed from when we have things scheduled ahead of time.
Okay, so then, what's the mechanism for giving people a heads-up for the, than 24 hours in front of a meeting, what's gonna be discussed at the meeting? 'Cause, 'cause meetings don't get posted till, like, Friday.
Yeah, that's what this is supposed to do, but we genuinely don't have anything right now on the schedule for the next two meetings.
Okay, so my question is, though, is if this doesn't get published until Friday the meeting, before the meeting, we know before, we may not know now, but we know more before that Friday, what's gonna be on the agenda, right?
Yes.
You know, I, I think the purpose was to give people a little bit more notice of what was gonna be discussed at the meetings.
But when we have something to put there?
So let's make something to put there right now.
Well, we know we're gonna discuss the tax deed policy next time, that can go down.
We also should get an idea of people, we should make a plan for the roads. That's been a month now since our last meeting, we should have the, a date set.
You mean the construction or the?
For the emergency lanes.
Emergency lanes, yeah.
We should have that as we left our last meeting.
So I guess I'm just also asking about what's, what's the meeting scheduling, what's the topic scheduling process that we're here now? the topic scheduling process that we're here now at this point, we don't know what's on the agenda for the next two meetings?
Where's this, the spreadsheet?
That is, you, you have a link to it, you used to, anyway, the, it's a Google Doc, actually, that you, that you can use to peek ahead at what's coming up. We just genuinely don't have anything in. We now have tax dealing policy again for the 26th, or if you want to wait until the 9th, you can do that.
Put something in that here soon, put that on.
We, we have maybe, I think the thing that you're scheduling around the PD is a non-public thing, that's shaping up for the 9th.
It's, it's less about what's on this for the next meeting, as it is more about how are we planning our agendas out, right? And what are we, like, we had a whole list of objectives or goals for this board that we came up with, where are we with those? And are we scheduling discussions out around those? That's all I mean, you know?
Okay, well, let's, we'll work on that for next time, so we can start getting that fleshed out on a more regular basis.
So, are we putting the emergency lanes on next, or no? Well, we called it a workshop, that's a different altogether then. But we need to schedule a workshop.
Yeah, we didn't actually agree to have a workshop, although I think it'd be a good idea. It's becoming an agenda item for tonight?
That cannot be an agenda item for tonight. Well, I mean, if you want to talk about scheduling, sure, but...
What do we think?
How productive is this is going to be? I mean, we're already, you know, how many workshops are we going to have before we actually start diving into the meat and potatoes of this and making, making the decision that...
Yeah.
You know, I'm getting word out there from some folks that they don't feel that the workshops are really helping, but then on the other side, some feel, so, I mean, we're kind of like...
Yeah, we only actually had one, that was in December.
Then we had a...
That wasn't a workshop?
December? Out in the...
That wasn't a workshop?
Yeah, it was. It was only on that topic, it wasn't a regular meeting.
It was a regular meeting, and...
No, I thought that was a special day.
Well, it wasn't a workshop by nature, it was a discussion amongst us, and then, I, I don't remember it being a workshop, which is, maybe I'm just semantics over the word that I'm using, but...
I mean, that was the focus of it.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're getting late in the season.
Yeah.
And we owe it to everybody.
Yeah.
I mean, to Ben's point, I mean, I think I was also one of the ones that was saying at that meeting, what's a workshop going to do? What's going to be different that we're not just going to get into the same conversation that we had last time?
Right.
Let's make a decision whether we stick with the status quo of emergency lanes, or we decide to make these all town roads, let's make a decision on something.
Neither one of those are viable options.
Right, right, and, and I, and we were talking about coming up with, you know, standards for these roads, we already have a standard, it was in the policy of 2011, it clearly states the width of the road rate in 2011, so, we shouldn't be hashing that out anymore, that's already stated.
So, you're saying it's just a matter of enforcing the existing policy, flawed or otherwise?
So, here's the point, we have a board of five people, and we have at least two and a half, three different opinions, and that's the problem. So, the question is, because you just sat there and said, neither one of those is a viable option.
Me, yeah.
And that's your opinion, that's not his opinion, it's not necessarily my opinion, I don't know if it's Tyler's opinion or not. So, as a board, we need to figure out how to get past the individual opinion stage, and I don't know how we're going to do that.
And put it to a vote.
And put it to a vote.
Yeah, put it to a vote, yeah.
So, we can sit here and debate our opinions for five meetings that last six hours each, but how are we going to get past that?
Because it's not fair, I mean, people at the blueberry pancake meeting, who just kept coming up and asking me, and asking me, and I'm sure they asked you too, Ben.
Yes, they did.
It was a subject right there, they wanted to know what's going on, and what's the decision we're making.
Well, you know, I have made this comment before, I mean, and, you know, maybe it's time that, to settle this once and for all, let the courts decide.
How do you do that, though, Ben? I mean, there's part of me that agrees, but how do you, how do you do that, right?
Somebody has to sue.
Million-dollar question, but I mean, I mean, how, I mean, how long are we going to continue to do this every few years, these roads just keep coming up? If you allow the court systems to handle it, it's done at that point.
The only way that I would envision that happening is if somebody sued the town.
And, I'm surprised they haven't. They're only going to sue the town if we take away maintaining what we're doing now.
Exactly.
Okay, but on the flip side of that coin, somebody from the other side of the town could be suing the town for misappropriation of funds.
Not under the term emergency lanes.
There's a difference of opinions of emergency lane.
But that's the policy right now, that policy in place says that those roads get taken care of as emergency lanes.
And the state law says?
Doesn't, well...
Says the board here has a right to rescind those.
So, again, I'm, I'm less interested in debating it right now, more, so, how are we going to move forward?
Well, we all have to come to an agreement on something.
How, how are we going to get us all to a point where we come to agreement?
We don't, it comes to a vote, that's how the process works. We can't all come to an agreement as five, if we do, we'll probably never get there, because I'm pretty much stuck on my, my beliefs and how I think it should be handled, and that might be contradictory to somebody else's.
Yeah, but there's a process in what you're talking about.
Right.
Okay.
You know, you make a motion...
You can't accept a road unless it's met a certain standard, well, we already have a standard.
What standard are you referring, the standard from 2011?
The 2011 policy.
Okay, I'm supposed to make sure we're close on the 20, that one, and not like on a brand-new...
No, 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 I'm just solely speaking on the 2011, of course, I haven't turned into a, the discussion or debate on this, but, I mean, there's a process in which the town accepts a road, therefore, we require contractors, when the house is developed, to bring a road up to a certain standard, we already have a standard set in place in a 2011 policy on these, on these roads, which therefore, half of them don't even meet.
Certain sections.
So, how do we...
Certain sections.
Okay, so what are we going to do? We're going to say, okay, we're going to pick one road, we're going to, this is going to be a town road up to this point.
Well, if those sections were fixed.
You guys are debating, you're debating the questions, I'm interested in our process moving forward, is it a workshop, is it, you know...
I don't think a workshop's going to work, I mean, the general consensus that I've got out there from folks, and particularly those who are affected by this, the workshops are not, so to speak, working, and, and it's creating more distrust amongst the folks that are, that are being affected by this.
I, I agree with you, I agree with you, I'm just trying to understand, what are we going to do to move this forward, to get it to the point where somebody makes a motion and it fails or it passes?
Put it on the agenda for next meeting, we vote on it.
I don't, I don't think next meeting is fair, I think people need more time than that, I don't think you put a meeting like that on the...
Alright, so, what's the second date of September?
You have meetings on the 9th and the 23rd.
I think, 23rd is ample enough notice.
September 23rd?
Would it be helpful if I gave you a list of motions, questions, that, that might walk you through to some, I don't want to shape your discussion, but I...
Anything that could help get the board to some sort of understanding and agreement, I am all for.
As long as it's not biased, as long as it's not shaping the conversation.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I mean, what it turns into is a decision tree of some sort, where you, I've, I've told you all along, you have, you have three major questions, and you haven't really answered any one of them, you, do you want to address the public benefit question, do you want to have a standard?
It's time.
Right, and, and so, if you're willing to answer those questions, then the decision tree gets a little easier, but those are the global questions, that if you keep avoiding them, you're not going to get to a resolution, I don't think you're ever going to get to a consensus, but you're not going to get to a resolution either, so...
I would be in favor of discussing those three questions that you brought up and moving forward from there. We need to, it's time, we owe it, like I said, to the folks that are affected by this and the rest of the town, to put this, come up to a decision of some sort, and, and move on from it, whatever that may be.
You good with that?
Yeah.
23rd?
Yeah.
Could you reiterate your, please, public back there?
Okay, you'll find him in passing minutes, Steve, okay?
Thank you.
You good with that, John, 23rd?
I'd like it sooner, but I'll take the 23rd.
Well, I just want to be sure that Tyler's going to be here too, because I want all five members of the board here.
I think that's important as well.
Yeah.
Okay, 23rd it is.
Pending Tyler's confirmation that he can be here. However, with that said, going back to my original thing, we got to get better about scheduling out what our topics are going to be and sharing that out with people, and that's what that purpose was.
We do have traditional things that are on the agenda at certain times, budget, for example, you know?
Yeah, that'll all, it'll all fill in, the fall does that, you know, we've got CIP coming, we've got all, you know, it'll...
Yep.
Summer is a little slower for us typically, but yeah, I agree. Let's work on that. Okay. Anything else on that, any of those topics? No?
No, thank you, Don, for bringing that up, I thought that was...
Looks like we don't have anything to do as a board. Why do we need five of us?
Back on that?
Sorry about that.
No worries, no, it's alright.
Alright, then, I guess we are ready for a non-public session, what letter is that?
A.
Personnel is A?
I'll make a motion, we go into non-public per RSA 91-A colon 3-2-A.
Second.
Rule call vote?
John Ma, yes.
Ben Bartlett, yes.
Tony Dumas, yes.
Donna Danus, yes.
Alright, we are now in, we are now in non-public session, we will close the meeting after we exit from non-public session, so, have a good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you, Steve.